A few folks I'd like to acknowledge passing recently. One is Edward Sam Toomey, who passed away recently. He was a true Newbury Porter, having been born here in 1932. He graduated from the Newburyport High School in 1950, after which he worked at his father's business and then served in the U.S. Air Force during the Korean War. He was a 40-year civil engineer for the state of Massachusetts, where he worked on numerous highway and bridge projects, one being the Bossy Gillis Bridge. He was an active coach in the Newburyport Pioneer League, and he provided his civil engineering expertise in developing the newest Pioneer fields. He survived by his wife, Georgia, of 70 years. In addition to his children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, and a great-grandchild, he will be missed. And second, Scott Beldon Wallace, the father of Counselor Wallace, passed away recently at the age of 82. He was born and raised in Illinois, where he graduated high school in 1958. He served as a naval officer from 1962 to 1966. And while he was in the Navy, he met and married his wife, Marty. After the Navy, he returned to school, receiving a bachelor's and master's in electrical engineering through the University of Illinois. He spent his professional career with Wisconsin Power and Light, where he is a registered professional engineer. And during that time, he also was a Madison Kiwanis Club member and also served on the board of the YMCA. He and his wife also had time to raise three daughters. After his years of working, he finally retired to enjoy playing golf, working with his wife in their yard, and building a log cabin. He's an engineer at heart, a dedicated public servant, and a beloved husband, father, and grandfather. He will be missed. Counselor Wallace, the apple did not fall far from the tree. Safe travels home. You will be in our thoughts. Moment of silence for folks. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would call the order.
Happy to, President. For the meeting of September 27, 7:00 p.m. Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Dunneou.
Here.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Thank you, is remote. Counselor McCauley.
Present.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Wallace.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Counselor Zied.
Here.
And Counsel President Shan.
Present.
We have 11.
Counselor McCauley.
Counselor President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and allow the mayor's comment after late file, and then consideration of Order 380.
Second.
All right. Everyone understands what we're voting on? We need eight to waive the rules here. Call.
Thank you very much. On the motion, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Late files.
So there are two late files. Counselors shall see on their desk. The first one is a simple matter. It's an email, actually, on top of an existing application for Otzville, moving the date from October 2 to October 16.
Motion sent to public safety. Second. Motion first to waive the rules and accept the two late files. Second.
Roll call.
On the motion to waive the late files with rule, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Now, I believe there's a motion to be made on moving Application 95 to public safety. Am I right? And friendly, maybe also to receiving file Communication 435 jointly or collectively?
Perfect.
Second.
Do you want to read the 35 into the record? Well, I should. 35 is the... It's a short letter from Sheila Riordan Spalding, addressed to the mayor, then sent to the clerk's office. "I am submitting my resignation from the Newburyport School Committee effective immediately. It has been my honor working with you and the rest of the committee to serve this community. Respectfully, Sheila Riordan Spalding." Thank you. So, on the motion on the floor, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
All right. Mayor's comment. All right. Good evening. I've got some sadness to start out with tonight. Michael Ippolito, husband to Assistant Superintendent Lisa Marie Ippolito, passed away yesterday very suddenly. Incredibly sad, very sudden. You know, she found out when she was at school yesterday, so again, there's a lot of heavy hearts down there. They have two sons, and I just wanted to send out our thoughts and prayers, and I hope everyone can think of them tonight. Thank you, clerk, for reading the Sheila Spalding letter. So, Counsel President and I have met on this, and we'll be coming out with some more information tomorrow, when that next meeting will be to find her replacement. I sent you out a ton of information tonight, so I'm just going to read a little bit of it, and then you guys can look for the rest. And I gave Jase some of the notes, so I don't know what we did in there. We saw the mandatory water restriction going on here in Newburyport. We are really hovering around 80%, which is great news. We're going to keep those restrictions in place. We're anticipating the state's going to come out with new recommendations soon, so we're going to hold on in here, because we're still at a Level 3 drought statewide, so we're going to wait and hear what their recommendations are. Acting Director Jamie Tucolo of the TPS oversaw the High Street line striping from Three Roads to Toppin's Lane last week, and we have just been flooded with great comments about that. So it's amazing what straight lines can do for morale here in Newburyport. Just glad I can help. What else is going on? I also just want to mention real quick, you know, we hired a new electrician back in July, Jeff Matheson, and he has really just hit the ground running, and he's another one that we're getting a tremendous amount of compliments on, not only with residents that he's working with, but also department heads. So I just wanted to give Jeff a shout-out. He's really done a good job. Friday, we were down the waterfront with Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, which is a mouthful, Secretary Beth Card, who actually lives in Newburyport, which I didn't know, and I was embarrassed I didn't know that. But it was great to be down the waterfront with her. Counsel President was there as well. They were there to inform us that we did receive the $400,000 park grant that's going to go towards Market Landing Park, which was great, and I just wanted to give Planning Director Andy Port and Senior Project Manager Jordi Vine in kudos for just kind of walking them through the history and what that project's going to look like and the benefits, and really tying it all back to resiliency as well. The Parks Reorg Plan, so I'm going to read this part, just because I put this together. "In order to give all stakeholders more time to review details and prepare for next step, I decided to pause the Parks Reorganization Plan by pulling the administrative order tonight. I thought the Neighborhood and City Services meeting on September 20th was very productive, and it showed that there was a path for getting a near-unanimous support from city council for this plan, which is my goal, and it has been from the beginning. We believe that the plan has continued to improve throughout this process, and additional time will help us reach a threshold at which will achieve a more broad support throughout the community. We have also had good conversations with the Parks Commission, and this pause will allow us to speak with them as a group and begin the visioning exercise in order to understand what support they want for their prioritized objectives. And we're actually going to start some of this work with the Parks Commission on Thursday. We will be able to incorporate those into the plan with greater detail. We also want to allow our New Friends Up group to formalize. They are in the process of defining roles for each of their board members and compiling a mission statement. My office also has a few other ideas that we're going to share down the road that should be attractive to council and will help the overall operations in the city. We look forward to continuing the conversation with stakeholders and coming back to council and the community with a further vetted plan, one that will have even broader support." There's just a few other things that I want to mention tonight. Phillips Drive kickoff meeting is Thursday at 5:00. I hope you can make it. We're meeting at the corner of Phillips Drive and Ryan Road. Did you get that, Byron?
Yep. Thank you very much.
All right. Just checking to pay attention. That's great. And the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight, we have two other things going on that I wanted to just make you aware of. Well, three, actually, I've got three things. So the first thing I'll say is we have an Atwood Park new lighting ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow at 6:30. If you want to come down to Atwood Park and see these beautiful new lamps that we have going in down there, it would be great for you to join us. Tonight, we have the Bartlett Mall vote, the CPA bond. We had a wonderful presentation a little while back by Special Projects Manager Kim Turner and Parks Commissioner Chuck Griffin. I'm excited about this project. I really think it's going to be able to move forward in a way. We're going to have these bookends for our downtown with the Market Landing Park and Bartlett Mall, so I urge you to vote this through tonight. I think CPA bond funds for this are just the perfect solution to this project, and it's going to allow us to just get it done. And finally, actually, one more thing. The Genie Gaidy Center Walk Against Domestic Violence is Sunday at 8:00 at Waterfront Park. So I think I sent an email out to all of you, but I just want to invite you again. We're doing a team from City Hall. If you'd like to join us, we'd love to have you. So just reach out to Christine in my office if you'd like to join us, and if you're already doing it, we will see you Sunday. I'm looking forward to that. And then just finally, Counsel President, I would like to ask for your... A motion to accept the mayor's request to withdraw Order 380 from consideration by the city council tonight.
So moved. Thank you, Mayor. Second.
Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the mayor's request to withdraw Order 380.
I'll second that. All right.
And the second is... Thank you.
All right. Roll call.
On the motion stated by Counsel McCauley, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Since we're a little bit out of order here, public comment. For those on Zoom, please raise your hands now, so we can let you speak for public comment. All right. Once Clerk Jones brings me up the board, I won't be accepting any hands on Zoom, so raise your hand now. All right. So no public comment from Zoom. Thank you. All right. So, public comment in the council chambers. First on the list is Ted...
Buretti.
Buretti.
Benny Buretti. And my middle name is Freddie, if anybody's interested. The parents plainly had no idea what they were doing until after they had already been born. Counselors, President, as Chair of the Parks Commission, I just wanted to make a few statements about the Bartlett Mall project. The Parks Commission has made Bartlett Mall and the restoration of the Frog Pond a top priority for several reasons. Its natural beauty as a public park, its historical role as a center of civic life in Newburyport, and its connection to the great landscape architects Charles Elliott and Frederick La Homstead. But we also recognize that cleaning up the Frog Pond is a problem that has been faced many times by generations of Newburyporters before us. For decades, Newburyport has resorted to half-measures and short-term solutions to deal with the Frog Pond. However well-intentioned, these solutions have helped to create the shameful state that the pond is in today. Eutrophic, laden with toxic sediment, prone to harmful algal blooms, truly a blight in the center of our city. Instead of punting the responsibility to a future generation, we've decided that the time is now, and the responsibility is ours to confront the challenges of the Frog Pond. And I know it isn't going to be cheap, but then again, cheap solutions of the past are partly what got Bartlett Mall into this mess to begin with. I know we are all stewards of our city and its parks, and we should all welcome the responsibility of restoring the Frog Pond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buretti, I'm going to just state 67 Marlborough Street?
That's right.
All right. Next on the list is Chuck Griffin.
Well, I prefer...
He wants me to go first.
Okay. So, Andrea Igerman.
President, counselors. My name is Andrea Igerman, and I live at 83 High Street, and I want... I hope that is not actually my phone. That's terribly embarrassing. I'm so sorry. But I turned it off. Collect my thoughts after that.
Andrew Owen Mike Downe.
I want to urge you to vote in favor of the Frog Pond restoration. I volunteered for the Bartlett Mall Commission for three years before it was integrated into the Parks Commission, and I was chair for two years of that. And as part of that process, we worked hard to educate people on the history of the Mall. I know you've heard a lot about that from Chuck, but it's a really historically significant place that I think often people drive by and either forget or they don't realize. And so restoring the Frog Pond will make a huge difference. And as Ted said, through the years, as I found when I became Chair of the Bartlett Mall Commission, there have been really short-term measures to clean up the Frog Pond. Alum put in to tamp down the sediment. There were aerators, but really nothing seemed to work past one season, or even if it worked. So I do urge you to take... I know it's expensive, but to take this restoration measure. And there's one last thing I wanted to say, and that is, when I first saw the Bartlett Mall 20 years ago, I thought it was one of the most beautiful things I had ever seen. And part of that was the reflection in the pond, the reflection of the fall colors and the courthouse. So I don't think you can separate the significance and beauty of the Bartlett Mall from the Frog Pond itself, so please do vote in favor of its restoration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Griffin, do you think you can follow that?
So soon, tonight, you'll be able to vote on this decision. And for me, it's an exciting time, because it's been five years of push, and it first involved discovery, trying to figure out, working with our historians in our town, what was Bartlett Mall? How did it get to be what it is? And after discovery, then I went into a teaching mode, to tell everybody else what I had discovered. And that took 26 talks, all unique to different groups around the town, and some of them you heard. So like, three years ago, I gave a talk here, and coupled at moon. And then it went into the stage of making sure that we had consensus, and trying to get the various people and attitudes and thoughts to agree on what should be done as an overall 10,000-foot view. We've done those things. And if you're able tonight to vote yes, if it gets the yes, I want to offer, I've sold my firm two months ago to my staff, and after 55 years and 200 projects, some of which were over $200 million, and large enough to house the entire population of Newburyport, I'm offering my services free of charge for the next two or three years, whatever it takes to finish this job. I would assist Kim in that effort. She heads it up, but I want to assure you that I'm not running away from the ideas or the responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, it's 3 Vernon Street. All right. Next on the list is Andy Simpson.
Good evening. Andy Simpson, 1 and 1/2 Greenleaf Street. First, I'd like to thank the city council for helping, making it possible for the public to comment. to comment on the Parks Plan. I want to thank the public for coming out and doing just that, no matter what side they came out on. And I want to thank the mayor for giving a pause so that we all share a love of the parks as he reminds us. I think this pause will give us a chance to share a vision and a pathway. And I'd also ask you to support the Bartlett Mall project.
Thank you.
All right, Jane Snow.
Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. I wanted to take this opportunity to really thank the mayor and the staff. It was really great to see in the paper that they are receiving an energy and environmental affairs grant of $400,000 toward the Market Landing Park. This just doesn't happen. It takes a lot of time, effort, and energy. And I could tell by the picture, and I know he'll laugh at this, that Andy Port was talking 9,000 miles an hour as he was sharing this with this lady. But again, that shows the enthusiasm and effort that we're putting into this, and I so appreciate it, and I think sometimes it gets lost in other things. Kim Turner wrote a grant several years, I don't know, I think it was last year, don't quote me on the timeframe, for lights down at Atwood Park. Tomorrow night, you get the lighting of lights in the park. Then we have the Bartlett Mall order in front of us, and it will help us with the permitting and the bonding and the design. And I know it's a big chunk of money, and I tend to be on the conservative side, people know that. But I do, I watched Mr. Griffin's slide presentation and the history. I learned a lot, and I've lived here all my life, and it was things I didn't know. So I appreciate that, and I really do think that it's time to clean it up and to move it forward and use some of the Clerk's beautiful paintings of that to help sell that point. And lastly, at the general government meeting, they were talking about the process for handling paper streets, and there were three communications that were there. And I know that the recommendation is going to be to receive and file the three communications, but I would ask you to rethink that and hold on to Communication 402 and Communication 410. And the reason being is that there was no final plan shown as to how you're going to go through the steps of addressing a paper street. And I know how frustrating that is, because I also wrote a letter, but you can pull the one I did. That's fine. But I do think that before you pull it, there should be a finalized process and a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Owen Smith.
Good evening. Owen Smith, 175 Story Avenue. So I did come today with a prepared comment, which I'm going to file away and hopefully not have to use. I'd like to just note, I think public debate is healthy. You know, people identifying problems and looking at past history and trying to identify solutions is how we become better. I think that was really shown over the past month and a half of the public debate regarding the Parks issue. You know, it is kind of disappointing that, you know, a month and a half, we're still here, but I guess the good news is now we can roll in a lot more that needs to get done. The positive, you know, there's a search committee for some department heads, getting some new leadership here to start driving systemic change in the city, I think is an important goal. And I really hope the investment the city's making on doing a search will pay off. You know, just to keep critical infrastructure on the radar in the city, recent news, Jackson, Mississippi, and as close as Cambridge, Mass, we've had issues with the water quality. You know, we have a shallow surface water system. We're at 80% capacity right now, like the mayor said. We need to start thinking about that because, you know, in the future, when demand spikes and climate change affects us, we may not get as lucky as we did this summer. This was quite an unprecedented summer. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that is it for public comment. So consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Approval of the minutes for September 12th and September 13th. There's one communication, 434 Whittier Tech Annual Operating Report. That's to go to the Education Committee. No transfers, no appointments. The following items are removed from their committees. Budget and Finance, Order 354, 355, 430, Order 382. General Government, Communications 402, 417, 410, and Appointment 340. Neighborhood and City Services, Orders 373, 374, 380 has already been disposed of. Planning and Development, Appointment 338, Communication 432. Public Safety, Applications 107, 108, 110. Ordinances, 119, 120, and 121. Public Utilities, Order 352 and 353 and 370. Communication 420 and 421, and Appointment 336. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
On approving the consent agenda.
Let's hear it.
Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
And Council Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Roll call.
On receiving and filing the mayor's update, Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
And Council Shan.
Yes. All right, seeing no first reading appointments, communications, transfers, or second reading appointments. Orders.
Order 383 is an easement from Seven Whites Court to the city of Newburyport for, I believe it's a five-foot brick sidewalk with curbing. It may already be installed. This is actually home, what do we call that?
Household keeping?
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping.
Thank you. Because I believe the easement should have been given formally in like something like 1996. In any event, that's what it is.
Motion sent to Planning and Development.
Discussion. Roll call.
Referring Order 383 to Planning and Development, Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
And Council Shan.
Yes. Yes. All right, seeing no first reading appointments, communications, transfers, or second reading appointments. Orders.
Order 383 is an easement from Seven Whites Court to the city of Newburyport for, I believe it's a five-foot brick sidewalk with curbing. It may already be installed. This is actually home, what do we call that?
Household keeping?
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping.
Thank you. Because I believe the easement should have been given formally in like something like 1996. In any event, that's what it is.
Motion sent to Planning and Development.
Discussion. Roll call.
Referring Order 383 to Planning and Development, Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
And Council Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. If I'm not mistaken, we're on to committee items.
We are.
All right, so we will skip the Brown School since we have that in Planning and Development. I will make a mention on Market Landing Park just to give folks an update. The planning board did approve the Phase 1 special permit last week. They are going to be reviewing Phase 2 and 3 at their next two meetings. So hopefully by the end of October, the Market Landing Park planning pieces will be in place. So more to come there. Budget and Finance.
Motion to collectively approve Order 354, Project Number 4, and Order 355, Bartlett Mall. Thank you. So Order 354 is the last piece of the CPC for 2022. It is Project Number 4, and actually, it's a partial of a partial, so it's Project 4 and then specifically the bond. And then Order 355, which is the bond order itself. I think the project has been talked about quite a bit. We did enjoy and take in the presentation, as was mentioned. I'll just fill in some additional financial details that may be of assistance. So this specifically is a $2.574 million bond being proposed to come out of the CPC. So it would be paid out of CPC going forward, obviously subject to appropriation, but would become an ongoing expense to service the bond for the period of the bond and would come in each year, as we do see with other, like the Cherry Hill Soccer Field Bond and others and so forth. This comes on the heels of the approval we did earlier, which was the $216,000 for design. That was approved some months ago. That was the other part of project for that design, has been ongoing. It is not yet completed, but it is in process. Right now, they are focused on permitting, and now are really looking to get this bond order in place and really hoping that the project would be able to take flight sometime next season. We did have a nice discussion in committee following the presentation. We also discussed some of the other funding sources. The 2.5 is not the entire amount. There's the 216K that came as well that we just talked about briefly. There's also been some money that has accumulated over the years from sources like the Morale Foundation. So roughly, when you add up those different pieces, we were told the total amount comes to around $4 million, and we are awaiting a bit more of a breakdown of that from Ethan Manning, so hopefully we'll get that soon. But that's the total. Tonight, we're really only looking at the 2.5. We also discussed the interplay between the other recently approved Bartlett Mall project, which is the playground, and the timing around that. And then we also talked about continuing the discussion on what it will take to maintain and proceed. So because the design is still ongoing, it sort of led to a conversation in committee that led to an amendment, and that's what we have here. And essentially, what the amendment is, is to add a line that says, "Subject to a final plan being presented to the City Council for approval on this bond." This is the exact same language, you'll recall, that we used recently on another bond, and that was for the Market Landing Park, because they were sort of in similar places where there was a desire to show the commitment to the project, but not maybe finality on some of the details. The committee voted 3 to 0 on the amendment, and then 3 to 0 on the recommendation to approve. And they're still working on a timeline, but expect to start having some more detail on what the final plan will look like towards the end of the year. So I would assume maybe sometime in January or so, we'd be able to see that. We did all our cross-checks on bonding, and we don't need to waive any rules, and so that is the committee's recommendation.
Clerk Jones.
If I could suggest, I probably should read it in the record.
Sure.
That upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, $2,574,000 is appropriated, subject to a final plan being presented to the council for approval, to pay cost of the Bartlett Mall Frog Pond Improvements Project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under GL 4471, GL 44B, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city thereof, and that the mayor and treasurer are authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this vote. Submitted, Counselor Zied. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Zied.
So I just wanted to offer my thoughts. That was the committee report. I made the recommendation for, or the amendment in committee. I just want to say on the floor what I'm really looking for in the final, which is really just clear definition around what the project's going to be and all of the technical details, and then most importantly for me, what the ongoing maintenance is going to be. I think that the conclusion for me anyways is that it's a project worthy of support, but those details are important, as you heard in public comment. This would not be the first time that a fix has been attempted, but I think much like the odor at the sewer plant, there really needs to be some surety that, you know, this solution's going to work and that it will be durable and something that we can maintain over time. So I'm happy to support it, and I think that I'm confident they can give us that, but that's really what I'm looking for to get over that final. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zied. Further discussion. Counsel Donahue.
Thank you, Chair, President. I just want to just say, you know, as the, well, I guess technically I am the War Counsel for the Mall now. You know, it really is a special gem in our city and has been long overdue for some real love. And I think that the end result is going to be something that we're all going to be really proud of and, you know, honored to have in our city. So I just, I hope that we can unanimously pass this and look forward to the rebouetification of one of our most valued parks in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Donahue.
So roll call on the approval of Order 354 and 355. Council Cameron.
Yes.
Council Donahue.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Preston.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Wright.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
And Council Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is a motion to receive and file Communication 430, Year-End Financial Report.
Second.
So we had a committee meeting, and Director of Finance, Ethan Manning, who may be with us, I'm not sure, did present, in addition to the information that you see. We did have a really good and far-ranging discussion, so I'm just going to try and give you a couple of highlights. First of all is, you know, the general fund ended the year-end at 99% used. Typically, in the past, we've seen that more around 98 or something thereabouts, and that was explained by some, you know, continued tightening in the budget process. I think the council continuing to hawk over certain lines, and that's why it's basically being used nearly to 100%. And so that was a first number, and as often, we'll try and just point out specific numbers. The Enterprise Water Sewer, you know, pretty consistent there at the 97, 96%, and then the Harbor Master Enterprise at 93, a little bit lower with some encumbrances waiting until the next year. On the next couple of pages, on the revenue side, as has been somewhat common, the general fund outpaced the estimate, 102.9% of estimated revenue, so beating the estimate essentially. And we see this frequently. A large part of that was just under, or more conservative estimating on what those things would be, on what those revenues would be. On the next page, our famous colorful chart with local receipts, it often generates discussion and certainly did in committee there. There are some, you know, big percentage changes. Some of them are nominally interesting, some of them are not, but essentially motor vehicle excise, you see that at 3.7%. You know, getting new vehicles continues to be a challenge, so we're seeing some impacts of there. Other excises, though, up, you know, quite substantially. And a lot of that really was the rooms tax, and we did get into a discussion about excise rooms tax. And basically, it looks like a big increase, but if you looked back more than one year, essentially, you see that it's normalizing back to what it was pre-COVID. You know, getting new vehicles continues to be a challenge, so we're seeing some impacts of there. Other excises, though, up, you know, quite substantially. And a lot of that really was the rooms tax. And we did get into a discussion about excise rooms tax. And basically, it looks like a big increase, but if you looked back more than one year, essentially, you see that it's normalizing back to what it was pre-COVID. And I think that's a common theme throughout this, is that you had some weird changes during COVID, and now you're seeing these weird changes, but it's really just going back to what would be considered more historically normal. We did talk about the impact of short-term rentals as part of that potential excise, because that is, that does go into that line. And Ethan told us that, you know, that is where that line goes, and the state remits those taxes that are collected to the city. But interestingly, they don't tell us the breakdown. I guess apparently, that's something they're aware of and may do so in the future, but right now, it just comes in as like rooms tax. It doesn't say, here's how much came from short-term versus here's how much came from other things. So to be determined there. A couple of other lines, again, to not bore you too much with all the details, you could certainly check out the recording and/or the written report, too. But we did see some increases on the Medicaid reimbursement, miscellaneous recurring, miscellaneous nonrecurring. I think that the footnotes are pretty helpful on those. But really, the other area of discussion, so miscellaneous nonrecur was tailing adjustments, sick leave reimbursements, things along those lines. State aid also came in slightly better than expected. And then we kind of completed the discussion on, a discussion of free cash. So often, a discussion and a little bit about ARPA and a little bit about the fire station. So on each of those, free cash started the year at 2.68, ended at 1.104 million. So we spent roughly 1.68. So we ended higher than that typical $500,000 watermark that we utilize. We are expecting to have a strong free cash position when it certifies in about a month, sometime in November. And then we're also expecting to see enterprise funds stabilize again, seeing water went skyrocket for COVID and then come back down. But again, back to more normals on ARPA. There's some funds there, and we are expecting, we need to spend those by 123124 is the current estimate. So I know we haven't talked about ARPA for a while, but that did come up. And then finally, on the fire station, we did approve that bond last year, and we did learn that some of that bond has actually already been issued, and we're sitting on the cash. Ethan was trying to catch essentially some tax, you know, things, I guess we'll call it, that make those bonds more attractive to the market, because your first $10 million of muni bonds are tax-free. So overall, I think the committee was comfortable with the report, understood it, and brings it to you with a 3-0 file to recommend, receive and file, and the details available online. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Z. Counselor McCauley.
Thank you, Counselor President. I just want to highlight another line item. I thank the Chair for highlighting the room occupancy, because I think it's critical in the ongoing discussion, forever discussion of short-term rentals that we should eventually bring back to the floor. But that's, but the item that I'd like to raise awareness to is, in the revolving fund section, the school choice account. As of 6:30, it has gone from 1.8 to 2.2 million, an increase of $400,000. And for those who are new, choice money is money paid to us from other communities to spend on educating our children. It's meant to defray cost for the host community. I'll ask that we be vigilant about this. We, and when it comes to budget time, for the last three years, I've tried to make it my mission to make us aware that we have $2 million sitting in the schools revolving fund, and we're not using it for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Further discussion? All right, roll call on the receive and file of communication 430.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
The final one is a motion to approve Order 382, approval to pay prior-year bills.
Second.
So this is essentially a $3,000 order. It represents about 10 or so different bills that were incurred during the last fiscal year, but essentially invoice came in after the fiscal year closed. So it's for services or goods provided during the previous fiscal year. And as you can see, MGL4464 gives some quarter to be able to pay those. It's $3,000. We didn't spend hours on it, but we did discuss a couple of them. The American Arbitration Association was a question, and that was related to a union matter. And then a couple of essentially utility bills, National Grid, Verizon, parking vendors, car washes for police cars. The highest ticket item here was 733 bucks. The committee recommends approval three to nothing.
Discussion.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Just in conclusion, no more business for tonight. We will be meeting on Thursday from 5:30 and then a hard stop at 7 o'clock. We have a couple of items that we hung on to. The building inspector enforcement and the update to the municipal fees are both holdovers from our previous meeting. And then the only thing I really wanted to point out was the supplemental. Budget was referred committee of the whole. I just didn't know if anybody had any interest in coming to those, since it's sort of a tail of the budget. We likely will try and open that conversation on Thursday, but I don't think that we'll finish it. Our goal will be to try and get it out in the second meeting in October. In fact, we really need to in order, because that has to close before the tax rate can be set, and we typically expect to do that in November. So I just want to invite anybody who's interested to either get your questions. I'll be looking to see if there's any department heads that I could anticipate we might want to see, but would welcome any feedback from counselors if they have somebody they would like to attend. Thank you. And that's it for budget.
Counselor Z. Education.
Yes, thank you, Counselor President. The education committee met last week on the 19th. It was our kind of first meeting since school started, so it was nice to have the superintendent there as well. They talked a little bit about the efforts they're doing now to review their current policies. There's been some collections of monies for naming classrooms, but nothing really kind of solidified in writing. So they're working on just tightening up, I would say, general practices, as people of the public have been coming forward, trying to understand it. So that's something they've been working on. In addition, they talked a little bit about the kids over the summer getting educational services and talked about the success of some of the programs they were running to try to get kids to catch up after some learning loss that we had seen during the pandemic. The out-of-district placement is not as high as it was before, but I do thank my fellow counselor from Ward Five. In terms of choice money, we did ask, I think Counselor Donahue was asking how many, what's the number now for choice? And there were 23 new choice students that came in. And then this time, too, there's 10 international students as well. So there are some funds being collected from the international, 90 overall in the district from other communities, and not many heading out of the district, which I think we've heard that before. In terms of our, one of the things that they're doing is, public safety has come up quite a bit in the schools, and I just want to let the public know and other counselors know that on October 4th, which is, I think, their next meeting, which is a Monday, let me just double-check, I hope I got that right, maybe 3rd, sorry, October 3rd, they will be holding a public safety forum. So the superintendent, Marshall Murray, it'll be in the NOC auditorium, and they're going to talk about school safety. You know, what do you do when there are kind of situations that you need to do lockdown, just a whole kind of gamut of different aspects for schools. And then finally, we are going to try to meet before the school committee meeting, which we had used to do a long time ago. So our next meeting will be on October 17th. There is also going to be the joint meeting, so for marking calendars, maybe Counselor President may have an update on that. They did have a date here, but I don't know if that's changed. But they have November 15th, Tuesday, November, so not sure if that's changed. But right now, Tuesday, November 15th, at 6:30 PM, will be the joint school committee and city council meeting, which is where we get a snapshot and a look into their budget process, as kind of kicks it off. So I encourage everyone to put that in their calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Khan.
Sorry, what was that, Kate?
Tuesday, November 15th at 6:30.
Thank you.
And where was it going to be?
That one, sorry, I believe they were talking about a cafeteria at the school, but last time, it was at the senior center. So location probably is still to be determined.
Thank you, Counselor Khan. All right, so general government. Let's start with a motion to receive and file collectively communications 417 and 410.
Second.
So these two specific communications were regarding a question regarding Coffin Street Extension. Prior to these two communications coming in, we had the original communication on the paper street for Cushing. And this is where we started the process of working with the administration on what the paper street policy could look like for a resident coming into City Hall. We went through that process the last general government meeting, and we gave that to Chief of Staff Levine, who's going to work with KP Law on that one, because it's not really the city council to be writing this policy, but something that would be coming out of the administration. Another item that came out of the committee last week was the request to possibly have some sort of documentation that at the end of that policy, a resident could have something from the city that states, the city does not own this land, the city does not intend to take ownership of the land, that type of item. So I know that Chief of Staff Levine is working with the KP Law on that one. But specifically for the communications 417 and 410, this is where the tax assessor did review that and determined that it was a private paper street, and it's also going through a survey right now by the owners. So that will probably confirm that determination for the tax assessor. So the committee voted three to zero to receive and file communications 417 and 410. Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, President Shan. I am not going to be voting in favor of receive and file. I would like to see the policy. I know that's being worked on. And I would like to also get the KP Law ruling on what kind of legal mechanism residents can have so they can move forward with the process. So I understand we want to close this out, but I feel like there's still a few unanswered And then I'll leave it at that, but I will be voting no on receiving and filing. Thank you.
Chief of Staff Levine, do you want to comment on this at all?
I'll just say that this has been an ongoing process, but I think that we've had some productive meetings on this, and certainly, the work's going to continue regardless of whether the motions received or filed tonight, but we'll make sure that we have an update for the council and general government committee on this in the future.
Thank you.
Any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay. Further questions? Counselor Z.
I just wanted to sort of maybe share a brief synopsis of my comments in committee. I am very sympathetic with residents. I think this is a challenging thing, you know, where the city is potentially the abutting landowner or something like that. With that said, I think the broader, my broader thought is that the city is never one person. So it's very difficult to just write a letter that says, "We don't have any interest in the property," or "We have no intention of taking an interest in the property," because the validity of that letter is immediately questionable, and even if it is valid, it's only valid in its time until there's another thing. So I think, and we had a long conversation, and I know some residents were frustrated because they're looking for some sort of finality or just, you know, something they can hang on to. But I think typically, my thought would be that it's really incumbent on that person who is sort of imputing that they own the land or they want to use the land to be able to make the case. And there's really nothing that I could personally vote on that would just be a generic, you know, "We don't have any interest in the land." The only thing I would be personally comfortable voting on would be an actual transaction. You know, if there's a sale, if there's a swap, if there's a trade, even if it's a $1 or in vice in the reverse, a potential eminent domain or clearing of a title, that type of transaction. So I just wanted to make that clear, and I just think you have to be really careful with these. I also want to say that I'm very skeptical personally about using my MAP and assessor-type data to determine the sorts of things that we're talking about here. And I'm just very nervous that we're going to telegraph the wrong thing, and it's just, you know, some of these things may never be answered unless they go to court or something like that. Having been involved in a number of them on Plum Island, I can say that, you know, the truth is not immediately obvious or whatever, that is sort of an amorphous concept. So I wanted to express my sort of regrets to the residents. We couldn't give them, at least in committee, more of that direct answer they wanted to. But just to say that, you know, I hope a process can help, but that the process is also mindful of some of those inherent limitations that just exist, whether you like them or not. Thank you.
Well-stated. Thank you. Further discussion? All right.
Yes, sir. Counselor President.
Counselor Wright.
So I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of continuing the conversation. I don't think voting to receive and file this, I'm going to take the administration at their word that we're going to continue to work on this in some fashion that makes sense for the community. This is not an isolated thing. I think the number was in excess of 60 potentially throughout the city. And, you know, whether they're paper streets or if they're included in Chapter 90, all of those issues are still unresolved. And so it's incumbent upon the administration to resolve those issues, because we are getting funding on Chapter 90 on some streets that have some questionable legitimacy. So I would encourage the administration to continue the work and see if we can get this resolved in a way that makes sense and stop kicking this problem that's existed for a number of years down the road.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Further discussion? All right, so the motion is to receive and file communication 417 and 410.
Correct.
Collectively. Roll call.
Roll call. On that motion, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
No.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
No.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Motion passes 9-2.
Thank you. So next one is motion to receive and file communication 402.
Second.
So this one was specifically a letter asking the city council if we would fund having a title search done by the city. I am hesitant to do that. I do believe there are numerous paper streets in the community, and I don't believe that we have the funding type that we should be allocating to have folks go out and ask us to do title searches on paper streets. So this one was another one that fell into that category of, as Counselor Z stated, we probably couldn't give the residents what they wanted, but we are trying to get a process in place, and the administration is going to work on that, as Chief of Staff Levine stated. So with this one, I recommend communication 4 to be received and filed, and the committee voted three to zero to do such. There's further discussion? Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, President Shan. I will also be voting no on this. And as I was just sitting here thinking about it, the answer to this is based on the policy that we haven't seen yet. I mean, we can kind of say, oh, we did, you know, this and that, but the whole, the policy, as I understand it, would answer the question of, does the city have an interest in it? Would they be able to pay for the title search? Now, I know there's already been some work done on it, but we haven't gone through that official process, because that process isn't done yet. So for that reason, I'm just going to be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. Further discussion? Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor President. I, too, like the Out Loud Council, will take the administration at their word. I really do think that we have to have a policy here. I know there's a lot of exceptions to the rule, but we don't even have a rule to have exceptions from, right, going forward. As many people know, I've gone through something similar with this. It was a private transaction. It took a day to get this resolved. I'm uncertain as to chain of ownership and why we have all of these uncertainties that go on there. But again, I will, I'll support this to kind of reset the docket as we say this, but I do want a process, and I do think it's important for us to resolve this issue for a whole host of reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Further discussion? All right, roll call on communication 402 to receive and.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.[1630.63]
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
10-1, motion passes.
All right, last but not least, motion to approve appointment 340, Jen Groskin to the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
So Ms. Groskin came in and spoke about how she's enjoyed being on the commission these last few years, and spoke about her time working with the schools and how she was able to work, her schoolwork into the Human Rights Commission. The committee did thank her for all of her service. We didn't have any further questions, and we voted three to zero to approve her reappointment to the commission. Discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Dunneou?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is it for general government. Counselor Lane, license and permits?
Nothing here, but I'm going to schedule a meeting to clean up the three items that are in there that are irrelevant at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. Counselor Wallace, Neighborhood and City Services.
Yes, thank you. I'll take this a little out of order. Motion to approve Order, let me write this down, Order 374, Plumber Ave. Concept Plan.
Second.
All right, thank you. Now, if you look at the plan here, and bear with me, because sometimes these can get a little technical, as we're finding in NCS and in public safety, so what is in front here is a concept plan showing proposed work that may be happening on Plumber Avenue while they are getting the street redone. So Plumber Avenue was not originally on the five-year plan list. The neighbors submitted a petition, and they came to a lot of meetings, contacted the mayor, chief of staff, and the administration worked with them and said, "We can put you on for this year." So the plan is to start curb and sidewalks in the fall and finish up next year with paving. The other piece of Plumber Avenue is, it's a major cut-through street, as a lot of those streets are between High Street and Merrimack Street. It's the first one after the three roads, so they get a lot of trucks, service trucks, and I believe it's also where fire would go down that road. And at the bottom of Plumber, there's like a little bit of a hill when you get to the bottom of Plumber, when you're coming from High down to Merrimack, there is Community Action Head Start School, preschoolers, two, three-year-old children. I want to say they have 30 or 40 kids in there. So pickup and drop-off has always been kind of been a challenge for them, but what happened a few months ago, there was a near-miss accident, which could have been potentially very bad. A mother was unloading her children, she had three children with her, one infant and a couple of preschoolers, and a truck came down over the hill, and she was on the opposite side of the school, her door was open, and it clipped her door. I mean, if one second difference, it could have been a very different situation. So that brought the level of importance of this project and some traffic calming, safety improvement measures way up. I mean, these are kids, small children, it's somewhat of a social justice piece as well because, you know, a lot of these kids are coming from families that need a little extra help. It's a very diverse group of kids, the cutest kids, the nicest people there, but it's scary at pickup and drop-off. So we've been working with Project Manager Kim Turner, who is not here, but Andrew Levine is here to answer any sort of process or questions, if need be. I'm trying to do the best I can here. So we had numerous Neighborhood and City Services Committee meetings, reaching out to the residents. I was kind of spearheading the communication and getting people on email, and this is all kind of a learning process as we start this new five-year plan, and the idea is that when we go to touch a road, we want to fix it if we need to, because we're never going to come back and do it later. So the engineering staff, John Eric White, Diane Gagnon, they worked on a plan with Kim Turner as the manager, and they came up with this concept. So this has been presented to the neighbors, and we have been getting comments in, and Kim and engineering staff have been going back and forth. So just briefly, what you're seeing here are some traffic calming-type measures. You see the basic ones, like bump outs, because an issue is cars coming very fast up Merrimack Street around the corner, right when, you know, children are loading in and out of school. The other issue is speeds coming, like I said before, down Plumber Ave. And there's a sight distance issue, too. So we want the slow cars coming in from both directions down by the school, but also there's some concerns down by the entrance to Atkinson Common, the driveway and the side entrance, so we have a bump out there. So we've got bump outs, got raised crosswalks, a couple of raised crosswalks, and one thing you may not be as familiar with are some chicanes. So this is what the engineering staff and project manager are proposing, and I think most everyone with the comments, you know, everybody agrees there needs to be traffic calming, they want their road redone. I think the bump outs and the crosswalks were not as much of an issue, but chicanes are new to people. So we had shown them some photos and whatnot, but basically it's putting in just little bumps on the side so that there's a little bit of a curve to the road, and you plant it, and there's, Cambridge does these, it's a very typical traffic calming measure. So as we were going through, we had a joint meeting last week with public safety, because Counselor McCauley will detail the orders that he had to process with regards to parking, so he'll do that later, but what we decided is that before you put in any sort of traffic calming measure like this that might be new or you're not quite sure what's going to work, is to do some sort of field test. So in the order, we changed the language, it says, "Subject to a successful field test of traffic calming measures." So what is probably going to happen this fall is engineering staff will go out and actually paint, you know, temporary paint on the road, because the road's going to be torn up this fall or next spring anyway, so they can paint on the road, and put some of the pavement markings, and so people can understand what might be in front of their house, is this really working? So it's a pilot project, and it's going to be educational for the whole city, but I think it's also a way to say, is this what we really want? And some people are very excited about it, and other people, of course, have questions. So I think this is a good compromise for now, that overall, we like this concept, and we understand that we've got to do a little field work, and then we, of course, will keep in contact with the residents a lot, which we have been. So I think the process has been going really well. You know, it seems fast, but at the same time, they got on the list right now, so we're trying to address the road work and the safety enough so that DPS can get out there and start the work, the curb and the sidewalk work, and then over the next few months, you know, refine some of these traffic calming measures. All right, I will stop there. I don't know if Andrew has anything to add, or no.
I'll go first.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. Counselor Zede, and then Counselor Khan.
I think she said your name.
I just wanted to, just two things. One is, I defer to the committee, you know, and the ward council in particular, on these types of things, but the two questions I had, because I'm not educated enough to comment on the plan itself, I don't know the particulars of the neighborhood, and I know these can be challenging things, so I completely understand why some are excited and some maybe are not sure, we'll say. But the two things I wanted to ask was, I would suggest an amendment to the language and the therefore, it says, "The city council shall review and approve." I would say, "The city council approves the Plumber Ave." and then continue. It doesn't really make sense to say, "Shall review and approve," that's what we're doing here. So it just maybe is a Scrivener's thing, maybe it's a friendly, but "The city council approves the Plumber Ave. Concept Plan submitted here with," and then the rest continues. That's the first one. And the second is for the chair, for the, so depending the outcome of the results of the test, do you anticipate a new order if there are material changes to the plan, like if they decide the chicanes don't work, or the, you know, I mean, my anticipation would be the parking is often the most controversial, and if people see they can't park in front, then they may ask for changes, and that may lead to it an iterative thing. It doesn't, I'm happy to support it tonight, I just would suggest that you might end up coming back, if it's a big enough difference, if it's not too big. So that's my amendment. I don't know if that can be accepted friendly.
I would, yeah, I guess I'm the only sponsor. I would accept that friendly.
Just for the record, so it will read, "The city council approves."
Approves.
Strike, "Shall review and approve," and replace with "Just approves."
All right, may I address his question? Yeah, that's, this is something, you know, these specialized traffic calming measures, Counselor McCauley and I had talked about it. I do think it should come back to the council, and is it even something that should be in our ordinances, like, you know, a parking sign or this or that? But, yeah, the idea is, this is not a construction plan, but a general approval from the council, like, yeah, we like what we see, we like the process, but if there's anything that changes or has more detail, we absolutely could bring it back with another order, and then also, so the residents would have more time for input and all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. Counselor Khan first, and then Counselor Wright.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Thank you very much to the ward four counselor for going through that, and I do have a lot of folks I know on Plumber, and I know they're very excited to get some attention, so thank you. More of my comments are, a couple of things, because I know in just conversations, there was some hesitancy, so I really, I'm very grateful that there is this amendment. I think the field test of traffic calming, new, especially new concepts, are going to be critical. The one thing, I think I'm throwing this out there, I don't know if there's an answer to this, but, and maybe the ward four counselor might know this, but as we're talking about traffic calming, traffic calming measures, and I know we talked and had some order come in, and I cannot remember if we actually provided guidance on what those could look like, because the one thing I'm also thinking about is equity across the city, but also, not just equity, but also holistically looking at when it makes sense to use what type of traffic calming measures. And so one of the things that I think, for me, when I look at the design plan, that's very new, it's very different, and while it might work in some communities, not sure how it'll work here, especially since we're having raised crosswalks also added. So I guess my one question is, as a body here, that as we're talking about traffic calming, it'd be nice to have some guidelines, some guidance, so that we could be equitable and say, well, some areas get this, but some may get nothing, or what gauges, I guess, how the traffic calming measures will look. The second one, I just, more is just understanding the amendment, though, the "Subject to a successful field test of traffic calming measures," and not really knowing what "successful" means. So that is something that I think would be really helpful to understand. Is it, are they going to be surveyed, is it going to be, and how long that field test will last? So, I mean, I feel like there's a lot going on here. We're basically, in my opinion, approving the graphic that I see here, so it's hard for me to support when I'm kind of unclear on really understanding what the field test will show. Like, so if people, like, there's not a lot of detail for me to understand that, yes, we're going to do a survey, and maybe that might be the way, or, and so I guess I just don't understand what a successful field test outcome will be like to then trigger that we're going to move forward with what we didn't even talk about cost, of how much it costs to do this. I just know that street, just wanted their street paved. In terms of the added expense, that's unclear. So I, at this point, I'm very hesitant to approve unless maybe someone can answer some of these questions. Thank you.
So I had Counselor Wright, and then Counselor McCauley.
I think Counsel McCauley was going to respond to, so I'll defer to him.
Yeah, thank you. So Council President, just in response to that, traffic calming actually comes under public safety more and more. So we've partnered with the engineering department to create a website that hosts all different types of traffic calming. The engineering department has gone down to Cambridge and got a tour from their traffic calming department, which has been very successful over time. There are multiple uses, there are multiple types, they're all been tried to collected and detailed on the engineers, on the engineering subpage for traffic calming. I do agree that not every piece of traffic calming is right for every street, and there is an equity factor in there for different areas getting different types of designs built for them. In this particular case, there were two examples used. One, which is the next piece of business that we have, which was the raised crosswalks, and then the second piece of this was the chicanes, which is really this. It shifts traffic over and makes physical movement of traffic over on the side. From my interpretation, from the public safety aspect of things, is we were seeing, we were hearing more and more from the residents that we needed to do something besides just pave the street, because they all knew that it was going to get faster and faster with a nicer street. And so I think there is some hesitancy from the engineering department, from DPS, from the committees that approved it, from the residents as well, that we're doing this as an experiment, we're hoping the experiment works, because then it can be replicated elsewhere in the city, or we can do another experiment with different types of traffic calming measures going forward. And so I don't know how to answer the question about what is a successful trial, because the goal here is simply to change traffic patterns, to slow traffic down, and we don't have any empirical evidence to measure what's going on now with traffic. We have a lot of anecdotal stories that go on, we have some police reports from near crashes and things like that, but the residents seem very vigilant as to what's going on on that street, and so I think, I don't want to speak for the NCS committee, but we had kind of agreed that we'd sit down with the neighborhood again and say, was this a success in slowing traffic down and shifting things, or did we just cause more heartburn shifting traffic around and eliminating, you know, some parking on one side or the other? So thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Counselor Wright, and then Counselor Zede.
Thank you. So I was just going to, I was just going to make the point that this is a trial, and maybe add some levity. So I think the purpose of the trial is to make sure there isn't any chicanery with the chicanes.
I don't know if I should have gavelled you that.
You waited all that time for that.
Counselor Zede?
I just was going to say two things. One is, my opinion is that the success is going to be measured by the ward counselor, who probably doesn't want any more work, but in my experience, I mean, I spent a year on two no-parking signs, the clerk can attest, who took the ride with me. These are really, really, like, painful things. Honestly, it's not uncommon to have a huge desire for a change, but then when it, you know, you can't park in front of your house, or you have to walk a few extra steps with groceries, people change their opinions pretty quickly. So I think the at-large counselor's point is taken, and that was kind of my idea, too, about bringing back changes, just to move this along. I mean, it seems to me that the consensus and the unanimity is around, everybody wants to do the trial, because that's really the only way you're going to find out. So maybe the language could be further tweaked, not to approve the plan subject to a test, but just approve the test. And then once the test results are known, then you come back and you approve the plan. That would give the ward counselor an outlet to bring the council in to help, which should be our role. It also would give the public an opportunity that if it's a disaster, they have an opportunity to speak, and if it's a smashing success, they also have an opportunity to come in and say, "Yeah, we loved it." I just, to add some more levity to the situation, on my famous two parking signs, the sign was ripped out of the ground. Not just the sign, the entire thing with the post, it must have weighed, you know, 100 pounds, and it was, it left. So I mean, these are sometimes the reactions that happen when you change how a neighborhood works, and that's where the yeoman's work of the ward counselor comes in. So that might be a suggestion as a way out. Let's just do the test, and then you can come back, and, you know, if this all works schedule-wise, it'd be a perfect thing to do in February in advance of the construction season. So I mean, I don't want to make that motion. I'll defer to the sponsor, perhaps, to also be the ward counselor.
Sure.
For approval.
Counselor Wallace.
I had one more comment. If you think of language, I'd be happy to entertain it. Oh, no, I forget what I was going to say. I forgot what I was going to say. Sorry, we can come back.
Well, I can give you language if that's what you're looking for.
Counsel, Counselor Khan?
Just proposed language is, "The city council shall approve the Plumber Ave. Concept Plan," sorry, "shall approve a field test of traffic calming measures as noted in the Plumber Ave. Concept Plan submitted here with." That's, so I was going to move the field test above before, and I would definitely support that.
Yeah, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Oh, I know what I was going to say.
Counselor Wallace.
Yeah, I think in terms of what is a successful field test, I mean, that's a great question. Again, I hate to put more regulation into this, but maybe over the next few months, Counselor McCauley and I can think about, is this something that should be in ordinances? I mean, we're approving a sign, we're approving, you know, all these other elements of street design, and like, I know the city of Newton, they have explicitly called out, they approve traffic calming measures. Just because everyone, it is all so different, and it does help the public process. But as Counsel McCauley said, there is a webpage. It'd be nice if there was actually like a link on the, like, the front page of the city council, or city council, of the city website, because I think there's an education piece, and we really need to start getting that out, because we hear over and over again the ward counselors, speeding, speeding, speeding. So what we have done, there's been a subgroup of a few of us that have met as part of TSAC and talked about traffic calming. And so the engineering department has been heading that up, and that's where kind of the website came from, and it's kind of a listing of the different tools that you could use, and it has all the technical guidelines, and these have been, the state actually has a listing of these, so there's really no reason for new reports or recreate it, but perhaps reference the state and the federal standard. So I highly encourage you to look at that, but I think this language is good. I think "successful" will be when we hear from the residents, and then I think when the council takes a vote. I mean, that's, you know, it's not just my decision, obviously you'd be referring to the ward counselor, but ultimately will be the council's decision, because we are, by state law, the highway commissioners, so. But yes, I think that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Counsel McCauley? I'm, sorry, Counsel Cameron.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is great. Plummer's been a long time coming. I was driving up it the other day, and, you know, it's a really long street, and I think this will be, you know, a great test that, as we do other streets that are similar, you know, those big, long cut-throughs from High Street down to Merrimack, I think this will be awesome. I'd never heard of a chicane until now. I did also look it up, and that was well done by my fellow at-large counselor. So in terms of the equity, you know, in having this, I think, you know, we've got so many streets, and I think the plan going forward, I think, is a lot, the street plan is a lot, and sidewalk plan is a lot more equitable than it used to be, it really used to be, you know, who was pushing the hardest and which street got pulled out of the hat. I think we should, you know, whether it's through ordinance, you know, each street has its own traffic calming program attached to it, but I think that's the way we get equity as we do every street. I mean, people may really be starting to push for these various things, but I think to integrate it into the reconstruction of the actual pavement makes the most sense. It's probably going to last longer, too, rather than trying to put in, you know, I'm not saying we're going the speed hump route, but those raised crosswalks, I think those are, those are great. I'd much favor those over speed humps, so I think it looks good.
Counsel Wallace. Yeah, just one more follow-up. That process is starting to happen. So engineering now is, they're taking the list of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but they're taking the list of streets to be done, you know, in the next year, and they're analyzing, they're going out there and analyzing everything on the street. So what are our utilities? What's the drainage? Is this a candidate for, for traffic calming, and et cetera, et cetera? And then, I've done a couple of these with engineering, because Ward Four has so many streets, you know, we start with, the ward counselor kind of helps organize the communication, but we've had a couple of sidewalks for Plummer, and then for Willow Ave is another one. So they're actually coming up with, I guess, standardized forms, so that every time you touch a street, you fix what's wrong. Now, there's plenty of streets that want retrofits, and that's another thing. You know, maybe they don't need to be paved soon, but they could, they could use these. So that's another kind of policy decision, but I think, you know, they're changing with traffic calming for the good.
Thank you. Clerk Jones.
Just for clarity's sake, I think what I have is, the last paragraph would say, "Therefore, the city council approves the field test of traffic calming measures as described on the Plummer Ave concept plan submitted here with, and authorizes DPS and the city engineer to use said plan, period." Am I got it right? I think that's what you said.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
If it's a field test, really.
Yeah.
So do we need to vote on the amendment? Or do we want to vote on this whole?
Definitely. Yes.
Okay. So further discussion on the amendment?
The amendment was moved by Counsel Con, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call on the amendment.
Yes.
Counsel Dunning.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. That's on the amendment.
All right.
Motion to approve as amended on the floor.
Discussion? Roll call.
Approving Order 374 as amended. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunning.
Yes.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve Order 373, crosswalks.
Second.
Plummer Ave. Okay, so this, with this order, and then once we get into the public safety piece of it, it's just a series of things that we have to approve per our ordinances. So this one, we are doing crosswalks in NCS, because that typically covers sidewalks, street work, things like that. That's kind of the direction we're going. I also did forget to mention that the plan came out of Committee 2-0 with one absent. And I will say, this crosswalk order also came out of Committee 2-0 with one absent. So this one is just approving the addition of a new crosswalk on Merrimack Street to the east of Plummer Ave, because right now there isn't one at that intersection. And this is going to come into play when we talk about our safety zone. Now, the construction of this crosswalk is not going to happen as part of Plummer right now. There will have to be additional design elements when they look at the safety zone on Merrimack Street, but it is this intersection, and we included it in here. And then it's also, there was one existing crosswalk from the school across the street. We are going to keep that, but that's a little bit further up from the intersection. So the engineering team decided to propose another one that goes on the regular part of the sidewalk for people who are just walking up and down Merrimack Street. So there had been discussion of, do we need two crosswalks, one giant crosswalk? But the idea is that there could be some sort of painting. It's not necessarily going to be, it's not going to be this big red blob that you see here, but it could be a whole raised area, or it could just be a safety zone. We can't officially call it a school zone, because it's not a K through 12 school, but that's why we assign the safety zone to this area. So that's pretty much it. There's another crosswalk down by the entrance to Atkinson, but that one already exists. So really, this is just the approval of two additional crosswalks and slightly changing the one that was already there.
Thank you. Further discussion or comments? All right. Roll call on Order 373.
Approved thereof. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunning.
Yes.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
And nothing further.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Counsel Cameron, planning and development.
Motion to approve Appointment 338, Joe Tishara to Community Preservation Committee. Thank you, President. So Planning and Development Committee met last week. Two of us were present, and we did vote 2 to 0 in favor of this appointment. So as people probably know, Joe Tishara has been on the Conservation Commission for a number of years. This would be an appointment to be the member of the CONCOM who serves on the Community Preservation Act Committee. That previously had been Paul Healy, who resigned after 30-odd years on the Conservation Commission. So Counsel Preston and I asked him a few questions. He's very interested, you know, in the community process. Obviously, he's a lot of experience on CONCOM. Mr. Tishara also mentioned that he had been somebody who actively supported the adoption of the Community Preservation Act back in, I think it was 2003. And so we approved it and ask for your support.
Discussion? All right. Roll call.
Let's see, on the appointment of Joe Tishara, Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunning.
Yes.
Counsel Con.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you. Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Z.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
7-0. Appointment is approved.
Thank you. A motion to approve.
Counsel Con.
Oh, yes, sorry. I am going to recuse, so I did confer with the State Ethics Commission. I'm very close to the Brown School, and this ad hoc is very broadly cast net, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Con.
Come back in an hour. Motion to approve Communication 432, Ad Hoc Committee on Adaptive Reuse of the Brown School property.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, President. So we met, I know this has a bit of a saga to it, but we met last week also in committee. There were, I unfortunately left my notes at home, but we had a few other counselors join us as well. We did approve this 2 to 0. There were two amendments made in that meeting, both of which have been incorporated into what you have in your packet. And as Counselor Con said, she's been removed as the ad hoc chair, and Counselor Vogel has been added. Counsel Lane had been added previously to the 9/22 meeting, and there was also a suggestion to add a, in the proposed timeline, add a number six, which would be that the ad hoc is, as you see before you, that the ad hoc disband upon conclusion of those items. So there is kind of a closure plan to the ad hoc in terms of timeline and deadlines. So I'll just add, and I know the President did quite a bit of work on this, and I do apologize yet again to my colleagues for not being able to get this committee off the ground over the last several months, but I think the folks that are named will have the bandwidth to move it forward, as I said in committee, and others may want to pipe in. You know, this is a great opportunity for us. It may be contentious, but I'm hoping that we can find a way to move forward. I know we're doing various bits of research to kind of understand various options. The city had worked very hard on zoning a couple of years ago for that area. And, you know, we, in the end, are going to need eight votes to move it forward, so each of us may not get exactly what she or he wants, but I hope we can find a way to come together and find something that we'll be proud of and will be useful to the residents of Newbury Port. So, thank you.
Counsel Vogel and then Counsel Wallace.
Point of order? It was 2-0, was I?
Oh, okay. Is that what I said? You weren't. I'm sorry. If I said three, I meant two. So thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Counsel. Counsel Vogel.
All right, thank you, Counsel President. Not that I'm a glutton for punishment, but did you intend on having a chair of this committee?
You're listed as the chair.
I don't see chair.
It's, yeah.
It should, it's Squibbner's error. It should be.
My apologies.
I was heartbroken when it was. I would like to add just a little bit, if I may. Subsequently, the planning director reached out to me, and we had a conversation, and Christine was there as well, who will be our facilitator. And we're going to do our very best to meet these deadlines and these dates. We have further correspondence from the planning director that we now are essentially waiting, though, for the information to come back from the administration with the last correspondence that we received through the council. So that's where we're at, and I'll do my best.
Thank you. Counsel Z.
I have a couple of things I want to say about this. So first one is, I didn't vote in favor of forming the ad hoc in the first place, for several reasons, but one of them was really, walking ground we've already walked. And I know that that's a debate, and I just stand where I stood before. We've done so much of this discussion, so, I mean, I read down the list here, and I say, okay. Committee meetings to discuss the scope and basic terms, preservation of the main building in the playground area. Is the playground area still a debate? It's been protected under Article 97. We've been down this. Adaptive reuse for housing. Type and feasible and appropriate unit and parking count. The subject of almost two years of debate for zoning. It's been done. Question asked and answered. Renovation reuse of the existing gym space. I will grant that that's an open question, but that's a narrow question. Mitigation of neighborhood impacts. The subject of considerable discussion during 2017, during the previous RFP process, et cetera. So I just cannot ascribe or subscribe to doing the same thing again. And we talk a lot about on this council about how we can spend less time. Well, one way to spend less time is to stop doing the same things over and over again. So that's a base concern that I have. The second one is, I really do have to express some frustration with the concept of a facilitator. I understand that some may think that that will add sort of a third party or outside touch, but it's really actually kind of a bummer that we don't think that we can have a conversation. I mean, this is our job. This is what people send us here to this room to do, is to have these difficult conversations, beat it up, come up with a response, take a vote, and then live by it. And I don't understand, it's also very interesting that the facilitator apparently selected here is from the Mass Housing Partnership, which is, obviously, I would think, very housing-focused. And yet, we talk about, okay, we want to reconsider all of these different things. We've already done zoning. We've already had this conversation. I'm well aware that nobody wants to confront some of the tough questions like, can the capacity of the building really support an all-affordable project based on the number of affordable units needed to make a project financeable versus what the neighborhood can live with? And that brings me to my last point. I'm just going to keep standing here for the neighborhood, and I think that there are broader interests in the building. So, for example, affordable has a broad interest across the city, with good reason. It's certainly a valid and viable cause. I think that previous iterations, youth services was part of that conversation. It, too, has a broader coalition across the city, and I will do everything I can to be a productive member of it. But I wanted to express those frustrations, and I hope that, you know, the committee will be run so that council can participate, and it's not a sort of a facilitator-driven thing, and then we just sort of sit around, because this is asking us for another six months of work to cover a lot of ground that I know I've done and others have done quite a bit as well. So I'll yield with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Z. Counsel Vogel.
Thank you, Counsel President. I do greatly appreciate the input from the Ward One counselor, and I, from a little bit further distance, respect and have the same concerns that he has expressed. I'm looking forward to having the facilitator. The fact that she happens to be from the housing angle of it, we had this conversation, and it's clear that she's here to facilitate, that she's not here to push any particular agenda. I think all of the things that were listed by the Ward One counselor as to what has been done, what hasn't been done, will fall right on the table, and I think by having this third party there, we're going to be very productive.
Vogel. Further discussions?
Did you rehand it?
No.
Counsel Preston.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to formally say that I have previously disclosed on this, while I am, I live in the neighborhood, I am not within the 300-foot radius, so I don't have a conflict of interest here.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counsel Wallace.
Sure. One suggestion in the purpose and goal is, I would highly recommend looking at the site constraints as well. I think that's going to be the driving force of the capacity in the building. You don't want to go through this whole exercise and realize that you don't have enough parking, or there's an issue with open space or access. So again, it's kind of like what we did for 59 Low Street. We never did a site plan the first time around, and then that was the one thing I requested right up front, you know? So that just plays into it. So it's not just the building, but the whole property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Further discussion? All right. Roll call.
A motion to approve Communication 432. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Dunning.
Yes.
Counsel Con. It's refused. Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
No.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
One accused, one no, nine yes, motion passes. And just a point of order, you have the Squibbner's error.
Correct. The Chair.
I have made no to the Squibbner's error. Correct.
Anything else? Counsel Cameron?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. All right. Public safety.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to collectively approve, make a motion to approve Application 107, 108, and 110.
Second.
I'll take these individually. Some have some questions, may have some questions, et cetera. Application 107 is the Chamber of Commerce Fall Fest from October 15th and 16th, from 10:00 to 7:00. From an application standpoint, it's pretty straightforward. They followed the model of what they had done previously this year. They had great success of that, and that's a mix of locations of in-street, Bullnose, as well as Waterfront Park, as well as the city's aspect, ownership on the sides of that to have vendors. What you've seen in your packet with this is they'll be using the main stage for performances. They'll have a beer garden between, behind sea level, but still on the grassy area. And the areas number two, they're partnering with somebody who brings a number of vendors in going forward. So, this was approved subject to a certificate insurance. They've submitted their insurance. So, that's a motion to recommend. Application 108 is a blood drive. It's run in partnership with Berkshire Hathaway and Dana Farber. They're looking to bring the blood drive bus into the east parking lot. We've spoken with the parking clerk and parking administrator and reserved a few spots for them along the way. It is appointment only. They have, this was approved subject to insurance. They have, they gave us a blanket insurance form with Dana Farber. Application 110 is for Indigenous People Day observance on Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 to 3:00. This needs a little bit of explaining here. They do plan to have some live music, which will be utilizing the stage of Waterfront Park. They are, they do plan to have six vendors. They do plan to have Messis as a food truck vendor, and they have a fire permit. They are, they're planning on building a fire in a fire pit with appropriate safety measures as issued. The Waterfront Trust has approved them for the stage. The fire department has issued a permit for the fire. The vendors are more artisan, and they are looking for, they plan to have pop-up tents. They will not be in any ways to the water going forward. After some debate and some conversation with them, we have approved them for placement on the east lot, and we approved them for the east lot for a couple of reasons. One, they needed 25 parking spots, which are virtually impossible to have on the west lot, and they plan to have 500 people on a plan, and that just doesn't fit into what they were trying to do. So, what we've suggested to them is they go to the east lot, they can have parking, they can pull their food truck up appropriately, they can have the area in front of the, of the shanties, they can be self-contained there and also be part of the park and the stage going forward. We approved them subject to an updated certificate of insurance, which they provided, as well as a health certificate for the truck, which they have not yet provided, and that was it. Thank you.
All right. Questions? Discussion? All right. Roll call. Applications 782.
Actually, I couldn't, I couldn't read my hand in time. I do have a question before we move forward.
Surely. Counsel Lane.
Where, where and what size is the fire that's going to occur on the waterfront?
Yeah, so, it is everyone's intention that they are going to bring a mobile fire pit, as in, you know, you can carry it, and have it tended by an adult with a fire extinguisher nearby to be able to have some sort of fire.
Did you hear that, Counsel Lane?
Yeah, I did. So, where is the location?
East lot, over by the shanties.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lane. Further questions? Discussion? All right. Roll call on collectively approving 107, 108, and 110.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
A motion to waive the rules, bring out of committee and approve Application 95.
Second.
Thank you. This is a continuation of an approval that we had already had for the application for the shanties to actually be on that part of the parcel on the east lot. They've asked for an extension from October 2nd, which it would have expired through October 15th, 16th, actually, to coincide with the Chambers Festival along the way. They've had much better attendance than they had in the past, both for vendors as well as people buying things going forward. So, they'd like to keep up that momentum. So, the ask is that they do what they're doing, they had insurance, everything will continue on for the next two weeks. Thank you.
So, the motion on the floor is to waive the rules and continue Application 95? Is that what I understood?
Yes.
Approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All right. Roll call.
As I said, Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. Did you need a second on that? I have Counsel Donahue's second.
I'm sorry I can't do these collectively, the next three, but ordinance 119, a motion to approve.
Second.
So, this is a motion to restrict parking on Plummer Street. Again, this is in conjunction with what we've approved earlier in terms of the concept plan and coincides with that. So, the ask is to, on Plummer Street, on the easterly side from Merrimack, for a distance of 120 feet in the southerly direction, that's up the street ironically, on the easterly side for a distance of 40 feet in the southerly direction, a place of no parking here to corner sign. That would be the red blocked area that we had seen earlier in the sidewalk plan. And then continuing on the easterly side from Merrimack for a distance of additional 80 feet to put a variable time no parking, be it 7:30 to 9:00, or 3:00 to 4:30, whatever the case may be, to work around the opening for the school and the drop-off and pickup times associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Questions? All right.
Just one question. I guess my only question is, now that we are really doing a test, I just, is this something we see as like, we need this no matter what the outcome of the test is? May be directed to the Ward 4 counselor or the public safety chair.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
All right. Further questions? All right. Roll call on approving Ordinance 119.
First reading.
First reading.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Motion to approve Ordinance 120.
Second.
This is the, this is the why it's a yes. So, what we'd like to do is create a drop-off zone in front of the Community Action School along the westerly side of Plummer Ave for a distance of 80 feet, beginning 40 feet from the intersection of Merrimack and Plummer. So, 40 feet from the intersection plus 80 feet is the 120 feet. It mirrors on the opposite side, the no parking to the corner, as well as the 80 feet of variable parking spot. So, we've taken the last 120 feet and divvied that up in a variable method. Parking will be available outside of those times and times when there is action going on at Pioneer Park, but just not in these areas. So, this ordinance is to request a designated drop-off zone when school is in session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Questions? Discussion? All right. Roll call.
Roll call on approval of the first reading. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance 121.
Second.
Thank you. This is a, an amendment toward the safety zone that we already approved for last year. And the amendment really is, the safety zone goes from Molton Street down by Pioneer Park and then just around the corner to Community Action. We didn't necessarily think that was enough time, enough space, rather, to alert those cars coming down the street going forward. So, after some debate, we've settled on 250 feet, which is just 120 feet is the safety zone, and another 130 feet after that would basically give alerting. It actually mirrors the chicanes if it works out that way, to be able to place signs or flashing lights or whatever the case may be going forward. So, we thought this through to the degree of where exactly we wanted it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further discussions? Counsel Wallace.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. Once this passes, I will start in working with staff, or however that works, reaching out to the state, because they need to get this information so that we can make it official. And then, because I think we're good in our limits. I was holding off on contacting the state because I knew that once we got into design, things might shift a little bit. But, and once we get that official, then, you know, we can put up whatever signage we need or special markings, because I know the school has asked for, you know, school zone markings, even though we can't call it school zone, but we'll find something so that hopefully we can get some of that done sooner rather than later, although obviously the roadwork has to happen. But, but yes, this stuff is stuff that will happen aside from the traffic calming issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace.
Chair, I have nothing else in committee, but I do have two quick updates that I'd like to share. The Western.
Roll call. Yeah. Roll call. On approving first reading, Ordinance 121. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else in committee that's coming out, but I do have two quick updates. On October 5th, the West End Fire Station is going before the Planning Board for its first review. I still would like, a hint to the administration, I still would like a neighborhood meeting once that comes out, so folks can at least see it and touch it in person. We did that during last June, and I think that it would be helpful again, but we'll publicize that on that. There have been some changes made. I know they're out there today, and I know that the Fire Station Committee, the internal group, meets regularly every Tuesday or so, and progress is being made. The second point I'd like to just reiterate, it was something brought up by the mayor in his comments today, was the ambulance service and coverage that we have. I did meet, when it was brought up by Counsel Lane, I did schedule an appointment with Acting Chief Bradbury and Acting Director Salt to talk about this, to see if it really was a concern that we should have, and that, you know, were they aware of it and were they on top of the issue? And it's something we should all be aware of. It's something that they've been on top of for the last three or four-plus years in managing the Atlantic contract, and they're living up within those boundaries of that. There is a nationwide shortage of people in the AMT space. That's, we're not unique in any way about that. The fire department has some options that I do believe they're going to speak with the mayor and administration about in the upcoming week along the way, but I just wanted everyone to know as an update, from a public safety standpoint, the fire department was very comfortable with where we are right now. It could be better. The hope is it doesn't get worse. And so, they are taking steps, and so I'd like to thank Counsel Lane for at least bringing this up to our attention so that it's now top of mind going forward. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counsel Vogel, Public Utilities.
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. So, I'll see if I can take these in order. So, I'd like to motion to approve Ordinances 352, 353, and 370.
Second.
Thank you. These were, unfortunately, I allowed myself to let these languish in committee. We met, President, at the meeting was Chief of Staff Levine, who reported that all of the, three of the applications are complete and that he was satisfied that the due diligence was thorough. There was a motion by the Ward 5 counselor to go ahead and amend the applications to let them run through 2023, more or less save ourselves from doing this again early next year. And that motion for approval of all three of these was accepted 3 to 0.
Questions? Discussion? Counsel Khan.
Just a quick question. In terms of the extension, did that impact anything with insurances, or was everything okay there? I didn't look at the dates, I'm assuming it's all worked well.
Counsel Vogel.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'm going to defer to the Chief of Staff, and I would assume that that will be taken care of. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be happy to follow up and get updated certificates of insurance should any expire during that term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? All right. Roll call.
So, it's a roll call on the approval of Order 352, 353, 370, with amendment, I believe, to go instead of 2022 construction year, 2023 construction year, correct? Correct. With appropriate insurance. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede. Again, languishing in committee, Communications 420, 421, though frankly, I thought that because we had passed these that they more or less took care of the committee's responsibility to take it on further. Both of these items were addressed and voted on back in June, at the June 27th meeting 2022, so I'd like to motion to receive and file, and that was 3 to 0, but we still need to, I have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Thank you.
Questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Motion to receive and file, Communication 4, excuse me, 420, 421. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Conne.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Azid.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, if I may, motion to approve the reappointment, I'm sorry, Appointment 336, the reappointment of Barry McBride as the Assistant Wiring Inspector?
Second.
Thank you. So, we met with, virtually with Mr. McBride. We had a communicate, we communicated with him about his experience and commented on his resume as we went through it. There was a question I posed to him if he had any views on the, my thoughts on the process of being a wiring inspector. He reported back that he was very grateful for the work that happens through City Hall, especially Diane. She always has everything in order, compared us to some other communities, and said that it's a pleasure to be working here. And he did make the comment that he finds it unfortunate that there's no time for random inspections, and that in the past he's had the time to spot on non-permitted work, so I thought I would just mention that in the, in my report, and maybe perhaps bring it to the attention of the administration. And I certainly invite any of my fellow committee members to add to my narrative. We did approve, 3 to 0, his appointment, reappointment.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Further comments or discussion? All right. Roll call on the appointment of 336, Mr. McBride.
Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Conne.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Azid.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President. Again, languishing in committee, Communications 420, 421, though frankly, I thought that because we had passed these that they more or less took care of the committee's responsibility to take it on further. Both of these items were addressed and voted on back in June, at the June 27th meeting 2022, so I'd like to motion to receive and file, and that was 3 to 0, but we still need to, I have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Thank you.
Questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Motion to receive and file, Communication 4, excuse me, 420, 421. Counsel Cameron.
Yes.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Conne.
Yes.
Counsel Lane.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Azid.
Yes.
And Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, if I may, motion to approve the reappointment, I'm sorry, Appointment